And fire me.
Yeah.
I did call.
Are you okay?
I did call you a stinker.
All right, you welcome back.
Boy, that's not his name.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for being so flexible and accommodating with your schedules today. We are back in our afternoon portion of the Washington County Board of Commissioners' work session. And our next topic is topic number four, the Sheriff's Office Critical Incident Review Process. And so we would like to turn it over to our marvelous Washington County Sheriff, Caprice Massey.
Thank you so much, Chair and Commissioners. Thanks for having me, team. I'd like to lead off in unrelated news that today happens to be National Night Out. So we will be out in our communities, spending time with everyone and celebrating the great community partnerships that we have throughout Washington County. So I'm very excited about that. I also appreciate the opportunity to come just kind of break down our critical incident review process and how we have so many processes in place to ensure that we can continue to provide the most transparent, open process that we can regarding not just officer-involved shootings, but other processes, other critical incidents that might not be on everyone's radar as far as what falls into that. So I just appreciate the opportunity. Our critical incident protocol was designed as a guide to assist us and almost like a process so that we don't have to rely on memory and it can outlive any one of us in leadership. And while the activation of the protocol is automatic in the case of deadly force applications, we also retain the discretion to activate all or part of it for other things that happen. And I'll give you, I'll give you a couple of examples as we go through this of what that looks like. The guiding principles for us are our core values of do the right thing, do your best and treat others the way you want to be treated, and the duty of the agency to ensure that all of our actions are thoroughly investigated, continuously seeking agency improvement and upholding statutory, constitutional, and contractual rights to all of our staff. Deadly physical force has its own set of criteria that are governed by ORS. So there are really some specific parts to that that require us to fulfill certain functions. Before I go any further, I'd like to lead with if you have questions at any point during this, please don't feel like you have to hold them to the end. I'm comfortable taking anything in the moment. If you would like to hold them to the end, I'm good with that as well. So regarding that activation criteria that I talked about, staff incidents like line of duty death or injury, which unfortunately, we just had a death of a deputy that was just adjacent to on duty because of the commute home. And so that was an incident where we actually implemented our critical incident protocol most recently to support those staff who we had in our patrol division and our jail division who responded to that scene and attempted life-saving measures. So the reason I tell you that is because I want to make sure that you really understand that this is, a critical part of this is in effort to support our staff and make sure that they receive the services they need when they are responding to these most critical incidents. Another piece, just a serious physical assault. While I say just, I was just talking about death. So we had a deputy, for instance, in the jail who was stabbed by an adult in custody with a pencil. That's another incident where those people that were responding and that deputy were immediately placed into this critical incident protocol system of supports. Public injuries or death, those would be our officer-involved type of things or passenger injuries, I guess. So think about our transport unit when they are transporting adults in custody to different counties. If there is a crash or something like that, we might institute our critical incident protocol.
I have a question for you.
Please, go.
When you say, I understand what you're saying here. Does the staff perceive that activation to be on their behalf?
They do.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will say that that probably wasn't always the case.
Yeah.
But we have elevated the way we are not just implementing this, but I would say we are expanding it to the types of things that we would implement. Once upon a time, it really was just for those critical incidents where there was an officer-involved shooting or death or the death of someone in custody. And we've expanded it because we realized that the things that our staff are responding to, like a child who was killed, impacts them just as significantly considering that cumulative trauma that they've experienced day in and day out, that we need to actually expand this protocol and make sure that we're providing holistic care from the very beginning. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Awesome.
Could I ask a question before you move on to the next slide, Sheriff? Thank you for being here and it's great to see you. So the definite, going back on the definition of critical incident is deadly force application. Knives, guns, axes, any of that, deadly forces. Does the use of tasers activate? If the, the other side or the person who's been tased have a health crisis based on the taser?
If the result to any party is significant injury or death, absolutely. So for instance, I'll give you an example. If someone were to use a taser and maybe the use of force was not the reason that the person died or was significantly injured, but they had a heart attack, say, and just as an associated or as a separate incident, it would initiate the critical incident protocol.
And then how do we define significant then?
Hospitalization would be something that we would likely bring that forward. The thing I really want you to know is that we have the discretion, based on the totality of the circumstances, to start the critical incident. So when I mentioned that we are expanding it, there is a degree to which it's a case-by-case basis, but it's more expansive. So we're really looking at it as making sure that anything that could be in question regarding use of force is investigated thoroughly by an outside entity and then that our staff are well taken care of.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And now I have a question.
Love it.
With my mouth now full of lunch. I believe, but I am asking you to confirm that activating all part or none of the critical incident protocol, such as through the various examples that you just spoke about, is that the discretion of yourself and your command staff?
It is. Division commanders and above have the ability to do that.
Thank you.
You bet. So you see on your slides, you know, I kind of went through it, but weapon discharge incidents, even accidental discharges will fall into this. And then in custody deaths to include those staff who maybe just respond or are doing rounds and identify an adult in custody. So really, our mid-managers are going to be the primary responders to those, so lieutenants in those divisions. And they're going to be the first people that say, hey, we need to look at, you know, implementing our critical incident protocol. And there's an entire checklist of notifications that are immediately going to happen from there. There it is. We'll break down the immediate response. Mid-level manager above initiates that critical incident protocol. We remove affected staff from the scene and then we provide union representation so that they have a clear understanding that this is not a reactionary action in any way and they're being provided their supports. We communicate with our public information officers and they start building as much as they can around information. And then we place affected staff on modified duties protocols. So that can be anything from, first of all, it usually starts with an initial space where they're removed and provided a comfortable space where they can decompress. And we provide our peer support, our chaplaincy, whatever they need in that moment. That's a place they can notify their partners or their spouses and, you know, the people that care about them. And then we remove them from duty so that they don't have to come back into the space for a period of days, depending on the incident and depending on how they're doing. So it really is individually designed because I might be able to respond back to work. In fact, I might feel like I need to earlier than my partner, who might need a little bit extra time. For those really critical incidents like an adult in custody death or an officer-involved shooting or something like that, that is assigned to our major crimes team. What this does is it really underscores a methodical approach toward addressing critical incidents, ensuring judicious investigation, unwavering support for impacted personnel, and a commitment toward continuous improvement within our agency. And so the major crimes team is a multi-agency team led by the district attorney, not by the sheriff's office. And that law enforcement council has, you know, they're run by a law enforcement council or have it like a user board that is comprised of the chiefs of police throughout the county, the district attorney, the sheriff, and all of our sort of officer-involved shootings or deadly force incidents are investigated in that way, just like adults in custody deaths. So the district attorney will appoint an investigator that is not from the sheriff's office to make sure that that interagency team conducts a thorough investigation free of bias.
Nice question.
Please.
Based on that, I really appreciate you mentioning the law enforcement council. Does every county have that? Is that something that is enabled or required through the state of Oregon, whether it's administrative rules or statutes? Or is it simply a Washington, simply, remove the word simply?
Yes.
Or is it a Washington County best practice?
Yes to both. The way we have it set up is a Washington County best practice. And every county that I know of also has it. It's, it's sort of like our public safety thing, right? So it's just, it's an opportunity for all of us to make sure that we are communicating effectively, that we are identifying areas for partnership in different ways that we normally have. But Washington County, and this is probably some bias, but I have talked to other sheriffs and spent time with them discussing the law enforcement council, and it is something that we do exceptionally well, including the user boards that are part of our special teams and things like that, that not all counties do.
Well, I've only had the occasion, I think, a handful of times to hear about the law enforcement council, and I'm pleased that I have. I'm really impressed with the level of professionalism and collaboration across every law enforcement department here in Washington County. So thank you for participating and pulling together the council and ensuring that there is that continuous communication, relationship management that goes into serving our shared community.
I appreciate that. Have you ever been to a, a
I've never had the opportunity of being invited.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. I will follow up.
I have a question about the investigation and the review along the first bullet points, the major crimes team. Does the DA, like, who requests the DA to do this? Is it self, as soon as there's death, the DA gets involved and they do their investigation to determine any criminal wrongdoings? Or is it just something that they have automatic? What, how does this walk us through the process of this part?
I'm happy to do that. After a critical incident, a command officer will notify detectives immediately that are involved in the major crimes team. And that initiates the beginning of that investigation. And the major crimes team leadership will identify people within that team who are not responsible from this, from the agency. So if it's, say, it's an officer-involved shooting involving Hillsborough, it's likely, it will be Beaverton or Tigard representatives or Washington County representatives doing that investigation. So the major crimes team leadership will communicate with the district attorney and they will get assigned the appropriate investigators. And then it is investigated, just like any other case, by, by incredibly competent detectives. And then they will write their reports. And it does take a while because they are waiting on things from the medical examiner's office, for instance, as part of their investigation for cause of death and, and all of that. And then once they complete their investigation, they write it all up and then they forward it to the district attorney for review for criminal charges. And that's when the district attorney makes an assessment of whether or not they've identified that there's something criminal that they should charge or if there is not. And once all of that is done, then they will issue a memo to the, to the entirety, the leadership of all of the agencies involved with their decision on whether or not there will be criminal charges filed or not.
And then just to layer that, thank you for that process.
Oh, it's great.
You did a great job for, for my own, like, layperson's understanding. The, the article in the Oregonian mentioned that the DA did investigate immediately and found no criminal wrongdoing. Is that the same process we just described?
That is, yes, the exact same process. Thank you.
If I could also add, this is all starting to make a heck of a lot of sense to me. We, there was an incident in prior years where in responding, our deputies in responding to a domestic violence incident, one of our deputies was harmed, physically harmed through a knife and stabbing. And our sheriff, always, was a prior sheriff, let us know right away that there was an incident and that there was follow-up. And I called him right away because I had a couple of questions. And he introduced me to the critical incident protocol then. And it, it, hearing about it, addressed not only my specific question, but and more, to ensure that every incident is a learning opportunity, right? That's in action, but also that there was going to be a review and that our deputies involved did have the level of backup and support that they deserved as being Washington County employees. So I really appreciate your coming to us today in this public work session so that we all have the benefit of it. And as we look forward to having a new commissioner onboard next year, this is something that he'll be able to, to have at his disposal as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'd just like to make the comment that in my monthly meetings with Al Rocke, he talks to me about when this has been implemented. But I think that there is a, an incident where children were involved not too long ago where this, the protocol was, was employed. And what, what I've always heard through Al is the empathy that is central to this process. And that's, that's always been very powerful to me is that it is about taking care of, of those that we're supporting, taking care of those that were impacted. And I think, aside from the investigation that has to occur, this overriding sense of, we know this hurts.
Yeah. Well, and I will share that, and I think I'll talk about it a little bit more, but it, much of this process is happening simultaneously. So it's not a this, then this, then this. While that does exist, much of it is happening holistically while the major crimes team investigation is happening. We are supporting our staff in some really specific ways and making sure that people are healthy. So I just want to share that. And I appreciate your comments because that's helpful for me to know.
My last question on that side is, could you repeat what the second bullet, con, conduct criminal, civil, and what PSU investigation stands for?
Yeah. Thank you for that. Yeah, I should have been clear. Professional Standards Unit. So what that looks like is, okay, so if the major crimes team investigation is finished and let's pretend, for example, that there are no criminal charges recommended. And then county council, to the last point, they're going to review that major crimes team investigation for any potential civil impacts going forward. And then we are going to review that in professional standards unit for any sort of policy violations that may have existed that need an internal investigation separate of the rest of it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Cool.
Is that professional, excuse me, is that professional standards unit and the survival skills council, are those pulled together through the sheriff's office countywide? Or does that come from some other place like the state?
So that's us, just countywide and professional standards. We basically have two supervisors assigned to our internal affairs and they would, they or another supervisor would conduct that investigation. And then our survival skills council reviews the investigation for any potential use of force issues or policy violations that they see that they would want to forward to professional standards. And that survival skills council actually has county council on it. It has subject matter experts from the office and a civilian representative.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. All right, let's talk a little bit about our support systems here. Our trauma and liaison support for our staff specifically, that's going to cause us to activate our sheriff's trauma response team. We call that START. They're peer support representatives who have additional training and are additionally dedicated to respond to incidents specifically regarding trauma in the workplace. And then we appoint command and peer liaisons for everyone that's involved to make sure that there are consistent and constant touchpoints to all of our staff that are involved and that it doesn't fall through the loops because if no, if not a specific person is assigned, then no one's assigned. And we've learned through time that we need to be more intentional with that. And then depending on the incident, if it was something use of force related, for instance, there is a return-to-duty assessment that is done. And what we do is we build scenarios that are just adjacent or similar to the scenario that people were involved in to make sure that they are not just physically, but mentally and emotionally prepared to come back to work. And then for those critical incidents that are officer-involved shootings, use of deadly force, things like that, there is a component to the critical incident protocol that requires counsel with someone from the medical profession. Once all that is done, the MCT investigation, the DA's directive, the sheriff's office, we assign our own administrative review. And essentially what that looks like is that has our lieutenant, sergeant, subject matter experts doing our own assessment of these incidents for agency betterment and areas of improvement. The reason that we wait on assigning those until after the major crimes team investigation and those other things is to not interfere with that investigation in any way because that is from outside and unbiased. We want to make sure that they have everything they need to complete that investigation without us muddying the waters by coming in and trying to change things or evolve things on our own. Are there any questions about that? Go ahead.
A question about the return to duty.
Uh huh.
Duty?
Duty.
Have you seen or do you collect data on officers or law enforcement personnel who pass the assessment to return to work, but also voice concern to say, I'm not ready to come back? Versus people who don't pass the assessment but insist on coming back to work? Do you collect data?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I will say this. I will look into that and I'll find out if we actually have data surrounding that. But I can tell you confidently that there would not be a circumstance where someone said, I'm not ready, despite their performance in any sort of return-to-duty assessment. There would not be a time when someone said, I'm not ready, that we would bring them back to work. Because at the foundation, we trust our staff to know themselves better than just their performance might illustrate. And whether or not that means they just need more time or they need more supportive placement or, you know, for some people, these can be really difficult. So. But I will follow up with you and let you know when I find out about that.
I would expect that some of these things may be cumulative too.
Without a doubt. Without a doubt. You might be fine for the first three.
Yeah.
And then, but you know, day in and day out, it, it really does take its toll.
Sad to that. During the board communication leadership, some of the board members had mentioned they were just at the jail break room opening. And I want to kind of link what you're sharing on the critical incident review to also the spaces that sheriff's office employees work in. And so the jail cafeteria was actually designed with trauma-informed care principles in mind. Because as a reminder, and I want to say this for members, the public who may be watching this, our jail deputies cannot leave the jail when they're on duty. So having that space for refuge and break is incredibly important. And sheriff's office deputies were actually involved in that design to help enhance that environment within the jail. And just, I know the staff are very appreciative of the board's investment. And having that be the first improvement in the jail is incredibly important.
Yeah. Thank you for that. And I, I can't underscore it enough actually because it has now become a space where not just jail staff can congregate, but now other divisions are coming in and actually getting to know each other and build partnership and relationship in ways that they just didn't before. And so it, it's really, the benefits have been far beyond what we, the practical applications that we were hoping for. And it's just been lovely.
It's very, I think this morning somebody used the word modern. It's very modern 2024 cafeteria. Like, I think a minor recommendation is you do probably need some fish for the pond outside.
We would love more fish for the pond outside. If only that blue heron would stop eating them all.
Use a net.
A blue heron caught in the net out there.
Okay, let's talk about these administrative reviews I keep referencing. The priority, supervision, training, equipment, communication, personnel programs, and policy. Those are what underscore what our staff are looking for areas of improvement under. And it is not one or two of these, it is all of these. It's incredibly important that we examine whether or not the leadership and oversight of incidents happened the way we would expect that they happen and not just us, the way our community would expect it to happen, the way you would expect it to happen. We need to be constantly evaluating our training and programs for best practices and for ways to help make sure that we are responding, not just in accordance with case law and what's legal, moral, and ethical, but also what's best for people as far as reasonableness. And then equipment, constantly evolving. We have found over the course of administrative reviews that I have been a part of that equipment is actually evolving based off of some of these administrative reviews. And then communication. And then communication, personnel programs and policy. Every single action is looked at through the lens of our policy and whether or not the response and what happens before and after is in line with our policies. And our policies are, are really inclusive. So um it gives us an opportunity to review all of those areas for not just, did we follow those best practices? But how can we evolve those things based off of our response? Um, post-review actions, just for your perspective on what comes next. The reviewers will uh draft a memo to the undershare. The undershare will review for implementation regarding all of those areas that we talked about. And then once those implementations have been completed, he will follow up with a memo to me. Part of that post-review action, actually, I know you're familiar with on this board most recently. Uh, there's a couple of instances. One, um, in unrelated news, but an example is the Polish use of force reviews that Sheriff Garrett uh requested for an outside perspective after not our critical incident, but one uh out of state. And for me, that was some really forward thinking because he didn't wait until something terrible happened at the Washington County Sheriff's Office. He saw an opportunity where we probably needed to review our own policies for best practice after a critical incident somewhere else. And then most recently, the NCCHD jail review, um, where we did have a series of critical incidents in the jail and he proactively reached out to have a overall review of our jail. And so with that, I know that you all know, but I'll state it here. That report uh in the final draft was completed a couple of weeks ago and our administrative reviews are underway for all of those things that we looked at above.
And the con, it's my understanding that the contract for that was uh issued and held by the legal department, so not under you and your department uh directly. So now that you have that final document, uh, now you're able to follow through on the subsequent process as you've outlined here. So thank you.
That's absolutely correct, Chair, and I appreciate you saying that. Um, in fact, um, all four administrative reviews from that particular contract are already underway. And I, and as soon as, again, and I'm just going to keep saying it, in the vein of transparency and accountability for all of us, as soon as those are completed, you can look forward to a briefing on all of them.
With the, with the article that came out yesterday, we anticipated that, you, um, how are, how are the deputies responding in the jail?
I haven't had too many conversations, but in the handful of discussions I've had from staff since yesterday, um, they are displaying extreme resilience and um they feel supported.
Okay.
They feel supported not just by our sheriff's office leadership, but by all of you. And I have continued to communicate how deeply you all support the great work that they do and the manner in which they do it. I'm sorry to cut you off.
No, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm asking really in the context of the critical incident response too because I would guess that there is a gut level of response to, to that type of thing.
The, the really, the gut level response that I've heard of so far is simply from those staff who were involved in those critical incidents and having to sort of relive that experience through the article that came out. That's what I thought you might be asking for there. Thanks for the clarification. And so that's the area um of, I don't want to say negativity, but that's the area where I'm identifying that our staff are struggling. And so um, I think you know us pretty well. We're just trying to wrap ourselves around each other and make sure that they are receiving the care and support that they need and that they know how supportive they are in this. But it's difficult for sure and uh, you know, likely no different than other people's responses.
Well, and I'm certain that when it's in a public setting like that, they get questions from their friends, their family, their extended relationships.
Absolutely. What other questions can I answer about this?
Anything else commissioners?
No, I appreciate the information. It's always good to have that.
Of course. And, and if there's anything I can expand upon or uh questions that you think of post this discussion, I'm happy to either come back or to follow up with each of you directly.
Thank you very much for continuing to further our level of understanding and familiarity with all things sheriff's office. Thank you for what you do.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
And thank you for being at the meeting earlier. Your presence there made me feel comfortable, just so that you know that.
Please know that I'm just a phone caller, text away if you need me. Take care.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thanks, y'all.
Alrighty, um, we do have another big topic uh on our agenda for today. Oh, we, my error, we did board communication earlier. No wonder we went a little long. Versus leadership communication. Um, but um I'm wondering, uh, would you like a, a short break before we go into the next topic?
That'd be good, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll reconvene at one o'clock. Thank you.
We'll be back on the schedule likely.
Can I borrow your eye?
Oh, yes, absolutely.